I think that's what it is, so we think that's why he's not here tonight. I can't remember which date he actually told me he was gonna be gone, but, uh, so since we know nothing more, we will say that he's out of the state. Uh, I will lead us tonight in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Most gracious heavenly father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful that the rain may come to an end soon, Lord. We'd ask you to be with this council as they conduct the city's business, Lord. We'd ask you to give them wisdom and, and, uh, the, and to make the right decisions, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our community as, as we strive to better it, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our servicemen and women that serve overseas and protect us and keep us from harm's way. And we actually, we want to be mindful of what occurred in London over the weekend, Lord. Be with those families that are grieving and be with the ones that have injured loved ones in the hospital. We ask you to bless them and heal them as only you can. We'd also ask you to keep our law enforcement personnel safe as they patrol our cities and keep us safe, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, special guests and announcements. We have the Mammell Youth Council, uh, here, a portion of the Mammell Youth Council here with us tonight, and we also have Mary and Fred Payton who are with us tonight. And, uh, we're gonna present some awards. And the two major, uh, Mammell Youth Council awards are the Payton Award and then the Mammell Youth Council Payton Scholarship. And they're determined by a board of civically engaged local residents, so it's not selected by, uh, us. It's selected by some residents that pick them based on their credentials. The Mammell Youth Council just completed its 22nd year, and Fred and Mary Payton have been there for all 22 of those, and we appreciate their support of this organization. Over the past seven years, the Paytons have contributed $3,500 to the Mammell Youth Council Payton Scholarship along with sponsoring many Mammell Youth Council and city events. Tonight, we're gonna be giving out two awards, and our first award will be going, is the Mammell Youth Council Payton Scholarship. And it's gonna be going to David Lee, and I'm gonna come around and make presentations in just a second. But David served two years on the Mammell Youth Council. And for the second straight year, Sarang Harris is the recipient of the Payton Award, which annually recognizes the outstanding member of the Mammell Youth Council. In the history of the council, she is the only member to be elected to two terms as mayor and is the only two term, two-time recipient of the Payton Award. Sarang served the maximum of three years on the Mammell Youth Council. Both David and Sarang attended the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference this year in DC, and a total of eight Mammell Youth Council seniors attended along with them. Both Sarang and David just graduated from Mammell High School. David distinguished himself in the Mammell High School Choir, the Student Council, and the Debate Team. Sarang, under, among her many accomplishments at Mammell High School, is the class valedictorian. David will be attending the University of Central Arkansas in the fall, and Sarang is slated to attend Southern Methodist University. So at this time, I'd like to recognize David and Sarang, and I'm gonna come around and present an award. Come on up here, Fred and Mary, please, if y'all would. Kevin, come on, you're part of this, too. Kevin Cummings is the, uh, is our city employee that had, that sponsors and helps with the youth council. Uh, so he does a great job every year. But David, on behalf of the Mammell Youth Council, I want to present you with the Payton Scholarship Fund check.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And this, this is like the traveling trophy, but it stays, it stays at, uh, the Parks Department. But, uh, but what I'd like to do for Sarang is present her, the Payton Award presented to Sarang Harris, Outstanding Member of the Mammell Youth Council, 2016-2017. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And we couldn't do it without Fred and Mary. I mean, they're, they're there for every event that we do, and they, they, they partner with the city on the Easter egg hunt, which the youth councils instrumental in. They're the ones that hide all the eggs, I guess is what you would say.
Tossing and
Yeah, they hide.
And then run.
But they're there every year for that. But, but Fred and Mary have supported them and supported this, uh, uh, scholarship fund and the Payton Award. And so thank y'all very much for y'all's contribution to our community.
Our pleasure.
Well, I'd just like to say that, uh, the youth council wouldn't be what they are without Kevin Cummings. He has, does, does an outstanding job with the youth in this city, and I think that we owe him a round of applause.
I agree.
Kevin, how many hours, how many total hours were there to be earned this past year?
As far as volunteer hours?
A hundred?
It's probably eighty to ninety, so.
And then total hours would be?
For the, for all of the members combined?
Yes.
I would have to do some quick math on the fly, and it's probably, it's probably in the thousands.
About thousands, yes, it would be.
No doubt about it.
Mm-hmm.
They do a lot of work around the city that a lot of people don't even realize that they do, but, uh, they do a lot of good things in our community, the youth council.
I would venture to say, if I could just tell you on it, I would venture to say that this was, I mean, I've, I've been, this is my eighth or ninth year, this was the best year for the youth council, no doubt about it. And a lot of it had to do with these two individuals around here.
Yeah.
Best year.
I agree.
Very continued.
And very supportive.
I will say, ever since Kevin's taken it over, I never have to worry about the youth council being late. Kevin, Kevin is from the Navy, and so, uh, if we're in DC and we say we're gonna have dinner at six o'clock, at five fifty or before, they're gonna be there waiting on me usually. And so I appreciate Kevin for that because it, it's, it's, trying to get around DC is troubling at best sometimes, but they're always on time in there, so.
Kevin is always on time.
So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. David, congratulations.
Did you go with him this year?
It's fine.
Y'all are welcome to stay, or y'all can leave if y'all need to leave. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the May fifteenth regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packets. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May the fifteenth. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I don't have any public comment cards on items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Next item is the financial statement review, and I'm gonna turn that over to the City Clerk Treasurer, Timmons.
I am coming before the council tonight to let you all know that I do not have, uh, the financials for April as of date. Uh, what I've put on the board and what I've passed out to the council is a memo from our previous, um, finance director who had more than a five-year tenure. And what she has, what she did is she reached out to educate me on the process of gathering this documentation and utilizing the software. And what was discovered, if I could just bring to your attention, if you can look at the, sorry about that, look at that. If you could look at that second, uh, paragraph, I won't, uh, for the sake of time, I certainly won't read the entire memo, but basically, um, she mentions that she's offered her services to help me and that, um, she had thought, I'll, I'll read the first paragraph. "When I initially offered my services, I thought the bank reconciliations had been completed and the general ledger accounts had been balanced because Carolyn did not ask for any assistance. I have since discovered this is not the case. She attempted," she meaning Carolyn Corte, "she attempted to reconcile using Excel but did not utilize the accounting software," which is what, um, I did not realize why I wasn't able to understand what had or had not happened. "As a result, the general ledger balances did not reconcile to the bank statements." Tasha, in, um, direct communication with Ms. Corte indicated, Ms. Corte indicated that she attempted to use the accounting software but was unable to figure out how to reconcile the bank statements using the software. Therefore, uh, just to sum it all up, it wasn't done in order for me to give you guys the report that you're needing. And so what Ms. Thompson is doing is she's doing all the month, all the work that we had assumed had been done all of those months to get us caught up. I would like to state that I was unaware of Ms. Corte, um, not understanding the software because I certainly would have provided her the tools and the training that she would have needed so we wouldn't be in our current state. So that is the summation of where we stand, and I am hopeful to have these financial statements by the next council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Alderman Mosley, is, uh, Ms. Thompson gonna do this for a period of time?
She does have an expiration date, and one, we don't have it specifically, but considering the magnitude of work that's needing to be done, I'm confident that she'll get us to where we need to be. And the mayor and I have been aggressively, uh, hiring for that, that interviewing, uh, for that position. So I think we're okay. I think we, we have, um, the support, the accounting support that we'll need, and moving forward, we'll have, um, someone in that position that will be able to fulfill those duties.
That's all I've got right now. We'll talk more later, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mosley. Alderman Anderson?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Are we able to, um, compensate Ms. Thompson adequately, or?
We, we are. We're paying her on an hourly basis.
Okay, alright.
She's, she's not charging us very much at all, but we are compensating her.
Well, I, I think I can speak for the councils. We really appreciate her coming back to help us, and it says a lot about her. Thank you.
It does say a lot about her. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions, resolutions and ordinances by title only.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Not all of them in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is unfinished business. We have the second reading ordinance number nine thirty-five, amending the prohibited uses in I-1. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
"Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-five, and ordinance amending the use restrictions for I-1 Industrial Park District, Zoning District to prohibit the refining, storage of ethanol and other dangerous, injurious, noxious, or otherwise objectionable substance that may create a condition related to fire, explosion, radioactivity, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, other forms of air pollutants, disturbances, electrical or otherwise, glare, heat, hazardous waste, or other objectionable elements in a manner or amount to adversely affect the health and safety of the surrounding area."
There's no action required on this item. It is on second reading. There's no questions or comments. We'll move on to the next item. Which is the first reading of ordinance number nine thirty-six, a smoking ban on walking paths and trails owned by the city. And this, uh, ordinance is back on first reading because it was amended at the last meeting. Madam City Clerk, if you'd give the first reading?
"Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-six, and ordinance prohibiting smoking on city walking trails."
Okay, if there's no other, if there's, Alderman Mosley?
I'm sorry, I saw one thing down there at the very bottom of the page, one. It almost looks like the start of another sentence. It says smoking. Is that just a typo? Should that be pulled out of there? Is that what that, under A, it says smoking. It's a definition of smoking?
I see it.
Oh.
It doesn't look like it should be there.
Be there.
Okay.
We'll get that corrected before we get to the next reading.
Alright.
Is there any other questions or, uh, comments on ordinance nine thirty-six? Okay, if not, we'll move on to new business. First item under new business is the first reading ordinance number nine thirty-seven, amending chapter forty-six of the Mammell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
"And ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-seven, amending chapter forty-six of the Mammell City Code."
Uh, this is Alderman, uh, Anderson's, uh, and I saw council member. I've been saying Alderman all night. Now, I realize I should be saying council member. Uh, but, uh, Council Member Anderson's, uh, ordinance, so I'll turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, it's the same ordinance that I asked for, um, before. It's, we've made a, I've asked to make a change. Um, it was, um, twenty feet of playground equipment, and being out in the public and talking to other constituents and, um, talking to people that might have to enforce that, twenty feet was hard to see and, uh, you know, from, unobvious from, from a patrol car or from, from, uh, from a distance. Uh, and so I felt like twenty yards is a lot easier to quote-unquote eyeball, you know, and, and, and the main thing is, is we want to make sure that there's no smoke, um, or anything near the children. So I asked to change this from twenty feet to twenty yards from playground equipment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Is there any discussion or comments on ordinance number nine thirty-seven? Alderman Mosley?
I think that's, that's pretty good. I've had some grandkids in town, uh, here lately, and, and the benches where people can watch the playground are probably outside of twenty feet, so probably twenty yards is better.
Right.
And, uh, so I think that's probably good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. There's no other questions or discussion on that item. We'll move on to the next item. Next item is the first reading ordinance number nine thirty-eight, amending chapter ninety-four of the zoning regulations. Madam City Clerk, if you'd give the first reading of that, please?
"Be it enacted in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number nine thirty-eight, and ordinance amending chapter ninety-four zoning regulations of the Mammell City Code to account for amendment ninety-eight of the Arkansas Constitution."
This item has been forwarded to the council with a due pass recommendation from the Mammell Planning Commission. And basically, this is, uh, to, uh, set the definitions in the areas in which a dispensary facility and a cultivation facility can be located within the city of Mammell. Uh, the state is working on regulations that dictate where they can go, and the, the rule basically is they have to be treated as a pharmacy or a drugstore, and so the drugstores have to be, uh, here in, uh, uh, well, they have to be in a commercial zoning here, and so that's where they, they fall. So that's why they've been added to, uh, C-one zoning, which is Village Center. Attorney Norris?
While we're talking about, uh, medical marijuana, I was reminded of a question that, uh, Councilmember Mosley asked at the last meeting about whether we needed to include smoking marijuana in the, the ban for smoking, and the, uh, current laws don't allow folks to do that in public anyway, so I don't see any reason to add it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Little bit off topic, but also kind of related to this topic.
Very relevant, thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
About the only question I've got right now is, I, I know we've elected to address this, and, and we're kind of one of the first ones, I think, to address this issue as far as putting, putting this in place. Uh, and my only question is, I wanted to ask one more time, uh, whether, whether by kind of being here at the forefront of, of doing this, is this by any chance going to, uh, increase or decrease our chances that, uh, either a dispensary or a cultivation facility would be brought here to Mammell? Do we have any, any opinions on that?
Well, I, I kid and tell you if it's gonna increase or decrease our, you know, chances of having one. Uh, we were contacted, well, Mr. Neri was contacted early on when it was still in discussion phases, that someone said that they had someone inquire about locating a cultivation facility in Mammell. But the actual applicants themselves never contacted Mr. Neri. Now, the, the, the rule, there's, there's an additional rule in the state law that's not addressed in our zoning rules, but it basically says that a dispensary has to be fifteen hundred feet from a daycare, a school, or a church. And a cultivation facility has to be three thousand feet from a daycare, school, or church. And so that limits the areas in Mammell that one could actually locate. So Track D is totally out because of the church that's behind the Kroger store, or the daycare that's behind the car wash at Club Manor in Audubon. Uh, same thing down on the kind of north end of town. There's the Rolling Oaks Baptist Church there, and, and then the, uh, the Lutheran Church is in the center part of town with the, the, the daycares that are also over by the, uh, uh, post office and that sort of thing. So, so it's pretty limited in the areas where they could actually locate. Uh, there's also, uh, rules that you can't have more than four dispensaries in a county. And is it eight in a zone or five in a zone? What was that? You remember?
No.
Okay. I, I think there's like eight zones, and I think you're limited to five in a zone, up to five in a zone. And our zone has like four counties in it. It's got like Plaski, Lone Oak, White, and, uh, some other county in there, I believe. I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but, so, so whether it increases it or it doesn't, I can't really say that. We're not actively out recruiting somebody to bring one into town. Uh, and no one has approached us, even since this has even come out or anything like that. I do know that the city of Fayetteville actually, you know, their mayor came out saying, "We want this to occur, and, and we're, we're encouraging you to come to Fayetteville." So, but we haven't done anything like that.
Okay. I think I would, I'd just point out, too, that Representative House, I think, mentioned that, that, uh, the community could actually, uh, there's the option for the community to ask for an election through a petition process, and then, uh, perhaps vote to make Mammell a dry community or whatever, as far as that would go. But that is an option and not anything that's probably, uh, based on, from all the discussion I heard, it sounded like it'd be a rare instance that we would end up with either one of those things, but.
Right, and it, yeah, you wouldn't be necessarily dry. You'd be non-marijuana is what you would be. But yeah, it has the same effect as, as, as being dry, but, uh, as far as alcohol goes. But, yeah, it's, you'd have to get, a petition would have to be circulated to call for the election, and then you have that election.
Alright.
And so that, that's written in the state law that a community has a chance to do that, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I, I heard, that discussion, uh, at that last planning commission was, was very good, and I appreciated that.
And Representative House, he even mentioned that when, when he started this pro, well, when the process really went forward, that, that he was on the opposite side. He was against the marijuana, and that he, you know, contrib, yeah, actually said he contributed money, uh, on that side of the campaign, but, but after he's got involved in it and studied it, you know, and helped with the legislation, that it's gonna help some people with their medical conditions, so.
Alright. Thank you.
Next item is Resolution two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, amending the two thousand seventeen general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
"A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number two thousand seventeen dash fourteen, a resolution to amend the two thousand seventeen general fund budget."
Alderman Holt? Sorry, City, uh, Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, on the first page, uh, the revised budget figure, it's just a technicality, but the figure is, is mistake, it's wrong. It says thirty-one thousand two seventy-oh-three point eighteen. We have an extra digit in there that needs to come out.
Yes, sir.
On the second page, um, I, I have gone over it about ten times, so maybe I didn't learn accounting as much as I thought I would, but the bottom figure that it shows that is thirty-one thousand two eighty-nine point twenty-seven. And it shows that the accounts payable is nineteen oh-nine, nineteen dollars and nineteen cents. Well, what it appears to me that they did, they added the accounts payable to the fund balance of twenty-six thousand five eighty-seven, and they came up with a figure of twenty-six oh-six point sixty-seven. And then when they added in the retained, uh, total retained earnings, they added that into the twenty-six, and they came up with the twenty-eight, um, thirty-one thousand two eighty-nine. It appears that they have added the nineteen oh-nine twice, and the figure should actually be, um, thirty-one thousand five, um, fifty-one, uh, I, I forgot what cents it is. But if you would check that, and I, I believe I'm correct on that. I don't understand how accounts payable got added to the fund balance, and then they also, um, totaled that into the retained earnings and came up with that total total. So it's thirty-eight dollars and eighteen cents more than it should be.
Councilmember Holt, what I can do is this report was generated by the accountant in our finance department, and I believe the software generates those numbers. I'm not honestly a hundred percent sure, but what I can do is I can get a clarification for you and get that information to you. But this report was generated by our accounting software that has been accurate to date and also by our accountant, but I can certainly get those figures verified.
Right. I, I, I got to looking anyway. When I took accounting in the University of Texas, I knew I wasn't gonna make my living that way, so, um, at any rate, I just wanted to show it to you.
Okay.
Alderman Mosley?
I'm, I'm with Alderman, or, uh, Councilmember Holt, that, uh, got majored in accounting, but it was a long time ago.
Yeah.
But, uh, I, I'm a little curious about, I'm, I'm not real sure I understand, what, uh, what number is it, what account is really being, uh, uh?
Changed?
Yeah, the, the, the lower one. It, uh, is that from, is that a two-six, two thousand sixteen account, a budget account, or what, what is that? Are we trying to carry forward a, a budget number?
If I could explain that, Mayor, uh, again, because this was unexpectedly given to me, my understanding of it is basically the two-five-three-two-hundred, uh, fund is our general fund, and the four-six-zero-four-ninety is the actual court automation fund. And basically how it works is it's a special use fund, and those monies are deposited into that general fund account, but they can only be spent by, um, a, a, the money can only be spent and approved by the district judge.
Okay.
I actually wrote down a, a definition that will probably be simpler to understand for people who do not have an accounting background. The court automation fund is a special revenue fund, but the district court is the only one that can approve purchases. The city council approves an expense, expense budget to allow, to allow those expenses. So you guys approve the amount that's in there, but the judge actually has to authorize to say, "Hey, we gonna, we're gonna use these funds for this amount." That's how that works.
So, so what you're saying is this was a, this was a two thousand sixteen budget item, and we didn't spend it that year?
That is correct. There were, we had no, we had no request to, to spend that money.
And so this account here is actually the, uh, uh, fund balance, or retained earnings or whatever for general fund?
Yes.
Okay, so all we're doing then is we're really just, we're, we're, we're increasing our budget for this year to make room to spend that money by, by debiting or crediting or whatever the, uh, general fund?
I wouldn't say, use the word increasing the budget. It's just basically approving the spending of those funds. The monies were already there. They just needed to be asked for.
Money was there, but we had to budget for it, and so that's what we're doing, right?
I guess I don't understand your question.
It hasn't been appropriated. So these funds are funds that are, uh, if someone has a fine that they owe to the court, um, state law requires an additional monthly fee be added on. That added on. That fee, the portion that the city retains, can only be spent on court technology. And so currently, because it wasn't used last year, it was just sitting in the general fund, we now have a district court judge who has found a use for some of that funds and would like to spend it. The judge makes the decision, but it's, we still need the appropriation from the city council. And so in some years in the past, from what I can tell, we've come in at about March with the numbers from the previous year and passed a resolution. I think it was 2016-11 was the resolution that we did last year for this.
Okay, and it just didn't get?
And then, so once it's moved out of the general fund into the, you know, it's now accounted for in the budget, then that authorizes the mayor, or the judge, to spend it on authorized?
Was Ms. Thompson involved in this entry here, to naming this account?
To naming the account?
Who developed this entry?
This is just a standing account. It's nothing new. It's the way that it's been.
All right. Well, I'll vote for it. I just.
Well, I mean, it's.
It wasn't Ms. Thompson that prepared the, it was our accountant, Mary, that in the back. If you're talking about the general ledger sheet that's attached.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't understand that. Alderman Holt understood that better than I did.
And then there is a line item in the budget, and it's called the automation fund technology. The word "fund" is a little bit different than.
I saw that. It's zero.
It's zero.
And so we're putting money in.
Putting it in there.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Resolution number 2017-14?
I move that we accept Resolution 2017-14.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2017-14, amending the 2017 general fund budget. Is there a discussion on that motion? Not all is in favor. Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. Resolution 2017-15 regarding interlocal agreement with HGAC to purchase fire truck. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas. Resolution number 2017-15, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract on behalf of the City of Mammell with HGAC Purchasing Service, directing the City of Mammell to prepare such documents as necessary, and to take steps as necessary to enter into a cooperative purchasing contract with HGAC and for other purposes.
Okay. HGAC stands for Houston Government Area Council, is what it stands. Houston-Gaveston, yeah. Houston-Gaveston Area Council. And so that is a regional council of governments. And so they can enter into a purchasing contract with somebody to purchase equipment, school supplies, and we can also be a part of that purchasing agreement. So back in 2015, they took bids on fire trucks, various numbers of fire trucks and all kinds of fire trucks. But then this allows us to enter into a contract with them to purchase a fire truck that's already basically been bid in 2015 on the process. We've used it for, we've used a similar type purchasing contract with Tips and Taps. When we built the tennis courts out here, the lighting was provided through a Tips and Taps, which is a purchasing cooperative also out of Texas. I don't know why they all seem to be out of Texas, but they all are, seems like. But that's another one that we've gone through in the past. But this one is called HGAC Buy, is the actual legal name of it. Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, is there a fee or a commission of any kind that we pay in order to be a member of that, the people that's on the board? They're all elected officials. And so that's my question.
I don't, Chief, if you want to answer that. He's been working directly with the representatives, so I'll let the chief.
Yeah. So the fee is actually built into the cost that we would pay the company that we buy the fire truck from. And basically, in a nutshell, this is similar to if I go in to try to buy insurance, my cost is going to be much more than if 10 of us in this room go in and try to buy it together. This is basically like we're tagging on with other municipalities to buy an apparatus at a cheaper price. So we get more apparatus and still maintain, to be able to stay within budget, is what this actually does for us.
We appropriated $530,000 in our budget for that fire truck. Through these people, will they work to try to get us a better price on that truck?
We will absolutely be able to stay under budget with them.
Okay. Is this, so this is now a permanent item with us, the Gaveston, Houston-Gaveston Area Council, that we will go through them on other purchases?
We are not required to make purchases through them. But it enables us, and it's a year-to-year contract, but it, during that period of time, we have the option of purchasing through them. We're not required. We can go to someone else if the chief gets a deal tomorrow that's better. We're not obligated to purchase through this company.
Right. I noticed that the expiration date was 12/31/17. So we've already used up half of the year. But after that, it's start all over again. Is that right?
It renews from year to year?
And they wanted your fiscal year there. That's why I went back to January 1. Not, it's the fiscal year of the city, so you couldn't start it in June because that's not our fiscal year.
I assume that you did get your air extraction unit, the $40,000 unit that we needed to, we voted on some weeks ago.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's a totally separate thing. That's.
I know, I know, but you've got it though, right?
That's due to be installed in.
Yeah, it wasn't inside this. I know.
Yeah, just two to three weeks away, and we should have that installed.
Okay. That's all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Mosley?
So this is kind of like a buyer, buying club or something like that. So we become a member of this, and we can say, "Hey, we're interested in a fire truck."
Correct. Correct.
And you give them what your specs are, and they say, "Well, we happen to."
And we match it up. You just pick it off a list, and you add everything up. And if you come within budget, you're within budget. And that's, that's the great thing about this.
Have they found one that you like? Is that?
Yes.
So we're just, we're executing this, and then we'll go ahead and give them the approval to trigger the deal.
Correct.
That's all I got.
There are several municipalities, Little Rock, North Little Rock, Jacksonville, Benton, Bryant, around us that use the same folks to buy their apparatus, so.
Do we use this for anything else? Is there, is this the only thing, just for our equipment?
Well, this is the only time that we've been made aware of this purchasing group. So we can check to see if there's other things that we can buy. As I mentioned earlier, we've used a similar type group to do this before and purchase items. But the one thing I know for sure we bought was the lighting for the tennis courts out here. We kept that separate from the contractor's price. We actually, we let the contractor bid on the lighting, but then we also got a price from Tips and Taps. And Tips and Taps was cheaper than the contractor's price. So we had the contractor leave the lighting out of his project cost, and then we purchased it separately through Tips and Taps.
Good. Interesting. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Chief Ezeau? Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm making a motion that we accept Resolution 2017-15.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2017-15. Is there any discussion on that motion? Not all is in favor. Please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution number 2017-16, approving the disposal of city surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas. Resolution number 2017-16, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
This is to allow us to dispose of the current ladder truck that we have, which is a, it's either, there's, it's either a '90 or '91 LTI truck, and it's getting very hard to get parts for. And so it's making it almost impossible, plus the evidently, and I'll let the chief speak more to it, but I think they're, every time they come out to work on the electrical system of it, they just open their heads, or scratch their head.
Wonder how they're going to try to fix it.
Yeah.
Now, this apparatus is, you know, it's 27 years old. I mean, it's tired. It's ready to go away. We could actually sell this thing, but in order to do that, we would have to put several thousand dollars into it. I just don't think that's cost-effective to try to, you know, put thousands of dollars into an apparatus. We may or may not get that much more back out of it. So along with the purchase through HGAC, the company that we're actually looking at to purchase an apparatus is offered as $5,000 trade-in on this vehicle. And that's really the best scenario we can hope for.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Holt?
Chief?
Wait a minute, Chief.
Sorry. I guess that shoots down my theory, since someone's already offered $5,000. I guess it's hard to turn it down. You know, I was just thinking that we got a piece of equipment here, and, you know, it's not usable, and that kind of stuff. And it would really be, to me, if we could start a park and have something like this out there, take off the critical parts and have it out there, and we've got the youth around town, and they come in, parents and who are teachers or whoever, and they like to climb all over it, and they learn a little bit about fire, a little bit about safety, and, you know, it gives them something for our community. You know, it's, you know, $5,000 is $5,000. I understand that. But it would be, and same thing for our police, I mean, whatever. But start even out there close to our memorial, have an area where it's a dedicated thing that we dedicate it to our firemen who have, you know, throughout the nation have lost their lives and who work every day and, you know, put themselves in danger. I just think it'd be, you know, something for us to start with. And yet, you know, I can't say it, you know, we shouldn't go on and sell it if we offered the money. It's hard to turn it down. So it's just my thought about it. So that's where I was going with it. But that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Holt. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah. Is this the ladder truck that we, that was giving us trouble? It's hard to drive, and, okay, I remember some stories that I've heard about that truck. So it sounds like it.
The wiring is underneath the seat in this thing, and if you ever lift it up and look in there, you'll understand why those technicians scratched their head when they tried.
Hard to see what's been done before.
Right. Right.
Okay. Yeah, that was a truck. I was thinking when we got that other ladder truck, it would replace this one. But I guess you all decided to hang on to it for a couple of years anyway, just to give us more coverage. But it's just finally gotten to be too much trouble.
Right. The last time, you know, through ISO, they were given credit for having a reserve ladder. So that one actually served a dual purpose. It could be either an engine or a ladder. So we got kind of dual credit for that. They've kind of revamped things. We didn't get any credit for it this time. So there's really no reason to keep it, other than to keep throwing money at it. And that's really not what we want to do.
What we're buying down in Houston is just, it's not a ladder truck. It's just a regular.
No, it's an engine. It actually will not come out of Texas. That is just where the bids came to and were opened, and that's the price we get to work with.
Okay. And I guess we gained, I guess over the last three or four years, we've actually gained another fire truck, which I guess we needed to do because we got another fire station, or a bigger fire station, or whatever. So.
Right.
We got enough fire trucks for what we've gotten now?
Yes. Once we get the new one, and the engine, it'll be replaced, and it'll go to reserve status. So we won't lose, we'll still have the ability if we have something wrong with one of the frontline engines, which are brand new, and I hope it's a long time before we have any trouble with it. But we would have one in reserve we could put right into service.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He just answered my question at the end of that. I was going to ask if we had one in reserve, so.
Okay.
That's, thank you.
Any other questions for Chief Ezeau? Thank you. I tend to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2017-16.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-16. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not all is in favor. Please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. Next item is a discussion of an email from Carolyn Corte regarding voluntary separation. And Councilmember Mosley asked this to be on the agenda, so I'll turn it over to him.
Okay. Thank you. I don't necessarily want to be doing all the talking on this either. I just wanted it on the thing because we've gotten, you know, we got a, we all got this email. And there's some things about it that I think as stewards, or, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of the city to make sure everything's operated appropriately, and our money's safe, and being accounted for properly, and all that. So I felt it was very important that we put it on the agenda and be talking about it, for sure. And the, what I have done is I sent that information over to the municipal league and just asked them if they could kind of give me a little bit of insight or perspective on what we've gotten and what they think. And so that, I got an email back here just about an hour before the meeting tonight. I'm still trying to digest all this, actually. I don't have my mind made up about anything. But I felt like there was a number of things that were interesting about her letter and her list of things. The fund transfer was something that I felt like we needed to look at and see what that was. There's a lot of just accounting procedures, and controls, and policies, and things like that that she talks about. And I guess according to Ms. Thompson here, there's a lot of bank reconciliations. We, I guess it's evident that we've been without a long-term finance director for a year. There's some things to be done and cleaned up, it sounds like. I am a little surprised that our auditors haven't caught some of those things. And but I have heard that they only, and I don't even remember where I heard this, but it sounds like they only do internal control reviews in regards to the courts. But that made, I'm not sure even where I got that. But so, anyway, I'll let somebody else talk for a while here.
Councilmember Holt?
Well, I'm certainly like Alderman Mosley. After reading, I have spoken to Ms. Corte, and there was no attempt on her part, as I understood it, to make any condemnation. It was just a matter of pointing out some things that she felt like. And she had mentioned in her note that there was 51 or 52 items, and she only had time to cover 15. So she has said that should we decide that we want to, she will make herself available. After having read certainly the email from Tina Timmons, our city clerk, in regards to that, and then the one from Alderman Mosley, it certainly points out that there's two or three sides to everything. And the only thing that I would, I believe that it, in a large sense, we need to get to the bottom of it and get it over with, and so we can get on with our business. I would request that we consider, it takes three Aldermen, I would consider that we request a special city council. It's not what we want to do, but I would invite her to come, and she said that she would. Let her answer the questions that we have for her. And then we make an, I believe it was, Councilman Mosley did say that we need to have someone of professional level, maybe as a guideline to help us decipher through what we know, or think we know, or don't know, or whatever. But I think it's open to discussion. Nobody's trying to throw furniture across the room or condemn anybody. But if there's loose ends someplace, it's okay. I'm very acutely aware of some of the meetings that we have had at municipal league, and they have told us that any idea, it's like, they said that people that get into your computer and you think that you're okay, and you almost guarantee yourself that you're not, because things do happen. And it's just one of those things. So I would be at the disposal of the council to have them at least consider. So, I would be at the disposal of the council to have them at least consider it without any attempt to condemn anybody for anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. While I appreciate sitting on this council and knowing information like what has been brought, I have to say, we as council members need to remember our place, okay? Ninety-nine percent of the accusations, because I, I can't prove them to be truths, so I'll call them accusations, ninety-nine percent of them are administrative issues. We are not administrators here. We are legislators. If it affects the budget, we're not here to, to correct a problem in, I'm trying to choose the proper word here, in control systems. That's administration. So, I don't feel like we should be spending a lot of our time dealing with this. This is the mayor's problem ultimately, and he is the chief administrator, and I don't want to walk on his toes. Now, if it affects our budget, or if it costs us money or something, I've known the mayor for many years, and I have no doubt he will come back to us for either advice or approval. So, I think we don't need to spend a lot of time on this. Let's give him opportunity to do his job.
Thank you, Councilmember Saunders. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have to agree with Councilmember, that's gonna be hard for me to say to him, Saunders, on this. This is an administrative issue. The biggest thing I can do is urge the mayor to fill the two department head positions as soon as possible. We need competent partner heads, department heads, running those two departments, finance and HR, and let them ferret out and fix the problems in those departments. I'm not an HR expert. I do have a lot of background with accounting, but I am not gonna dig into, to public accounting, because it's different than business, and try to figure this out. That's not our task. That's the mayor, the city clerk, treasurer are working to make, to fill that position. I think that needs to be done with haste, but it needs to be someone who's competent. And if you need our assistance in that from the council, you need to come back to the council and ask for it. But I do believe we need to, to get to the bottom of the procedural errors as soon as possible, but I don't believe that's within our purview. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm gonna make this easier. I may just start referring to everybody's mister and misses. So, so, Mr. Kelly, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo, I agree with the former two council members. But I also want to add that if it is a recruiting problem that we're having, and, and we all know what that means, recruiting problem. We're not, we're not offering enough money. We're not offering enough compensation. Then we need to look at that as a council together and figure out if that's something that we need to add to the toolbox for, because this is a problem. To, to go this long without directors is, is, it's disruptive. It's hard on, it's hard on leadership, and it's hard on the people that have to take those roles on for a little compensation. So, I do want us to, to think about that. That might be something that we have to think towards. I know that adding to the budget is something that's, that's not pleasurable to think of, but it is something that we do need to keep in account. And if we cannot compete with other cities or other entities, then we need to, we need to change that. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And I'll, Ms. Williams, okay?
I also agree that this is not, this is a supervision problem, and as a supervisor, I would like for it to be handled in-house. And I do think that as council members, our decision and our discussion should be the pay and the compensation. So, I agree. I don't, I don't think we need a special meeting. I think that the mayor and, and our city clerk and our city attorney are, are fully competent to take care of this. And I appreciate my fellow councilmen for bringing this to, to light and having this, like he said, there are three sides to all of this, but these are sides that aren't, don't even, I mean, this, this not, that don't even pertain to us.
And I, I'm sorry. Mr. Mosley?
Go ahead, if you wanted to say something.
Well, all I was gonna say is I did have a discussion today, and, and basically, the, you know, the HR department should have been filled a long time ago. I did make an offer back in February, but the gentleman just, he was a quality person, but he was coming from the corporate world. And he wanted a lot more money than was even above, it was above what our limit was. So, I could not compensate him. I had another applicant that was almost as qualified, same issue, was that just didn't feel like it was right for her at the pay it was. So, so what, the discussion I had today was find a qualified candidate and then come back with a proposal. I'm not, I'm not planning to come back and ask for ninety thousand dollars for a department head, but when that qualified applicant is there and they've agreed to come for a certain figure, then bring that to the council to see, you know, if they would, if the council would approve that salary increase to that level. So, that, you know, that's, that's my plan moving forward, on both of these positions. So.
Okay. I'm gonna have to disagree with some of my council, fellow council members here. It is our problem. If we can't just say, well, that's, that's the mayor's problem. We don't need to worry about that. If, if accounting controls and policies and procedures get sued, or we lose money, if there's misallocation or miss, money disappears, people are gonna look at us and say, why didn't you do a better job? Why didn't you oversee and make sure some of these things weren't looked at a little harder? I don't think that's, you know, just saying, it's the mayor's, we don't want to know about it. I don't, I don't think that's the way to go. But like I said, like I've said, and you've probably seen it in a couple of my emails, I don't want to overact or underact any of this. Most of it, most of it is policies, procedures, accounting controls, things are gonna cause, if, if we had, from what I understand, maybe if we'd had a legislative audit instead of a private audit, they might have been looking more at some of these controls. And that's something I think we ought to be asking our auditors about and find out. If all these things have existed for all this time, why haven't they, you know, do they not consider them important, or have they just not looked at them? And, and that's, you know, we need to keep this on our mind, and it may be, maybe that we should, maybe we should have a, one, one thing that's come to mind is that perhaps we should have a, like a subcommittee audit committee, somebody, you know, maybe three or four council members that interact with the auditors and find out exactly what the auditors are doing, and, and perhaps even consider maybe alternating one year a private auditor, one year having legislative audit come in, just, just to get some differences. I think we've had Kraft and Beach here for maybe twenty years. That's a long time to have an auditor. If you're, if you're looking for independent advice and people to take a hard look at things every year, sometimes you need to mix it up. So, there's, there's a lot of things that come to mind, and I'm not saying anything bad about Kraft and Beach. John Kraft is a friend of mine, and I like him, and I've known him for years. He's a good guy. But there's, there's questions we need to ask. We need, you know, perhaps we need this audit committee. I'm gonna be thinking about all this some more here. One, one thing I want to ask, I want to ask Attorney Norris's opinion on the, if he's had a chance to dig around or review some of the comments by, by the municipal league, and do you see anything illegal we've done? Do you see something that we need to look at, or you're going to look at? Mainly the, the fund transfer thing that bothers me. It sounds like we've perhaps built a fire station with bond money. We had an overrun that went beyond the bond money, and we're paying for it out of a salary of an HR person. Is, is that legal?
So, there are a whole lot of issues going on, and I'll get to that question specifically. But there's a whole lot of issues going on in the letter, and a decent percentage of those are what I'm gonna call best practices, or accounting practices, which I'm not, you should, no one should be relying on me to tell them what the best accounting practices are. And so that is something that you, we'd rely heavily on the finance director to advise us on those sort of policies. There are several things in here that are directly out of ordinances that I, I went and I've, I've got those ordinance numbers or code numbers. And that was, I want to touch on number four was the, the, the late fees being waived. So, there's an ordinance that says that the mayor may waive late fees for folks that are, are well behind, and it lists a few factors to consider that the mayor should consider. And so something that's like that in the ordinance is, is the council drafts the ordinance, and if that needs to be reassessed, that is one of those things that is very specifically, absolutely, undeniably under the purview of the city council, to be looking at those ordinances, to see if, if, if we don't like the way that is, to change it. And the council does have some ability to enact new ordinances if it were to notice something. But, so I'm not gonna comment really on the, the finance, the best practices issues. The one, when I read this, the first one that caught my attention, or, or the one that really caught my attention was the budget transfer from the vacant HR director position to the fire department's budget. And actually, a few weeks ago, I got with the mayor and I was asking, we also make fund transfers within the department. So, let's say the city attorney's office goes over on books, but doesn't use the travel fund. I guess what we've been doing in the past is there's a, a way of getting that transferred within the department head, within that department. And that has been a longstanding issue. I was trying to find some, something that said that is the way that the city council approaches the, the budget. I did find, I don't, I don't know that I have a physical copy of the most recent annual report, the financial report, but I just want to read this off. In the, in the notes section, it says that the appropriated budget is prepared by fund function and department. The government's department heads may make transfers or appropriations within the department. Transfers of appropriations between departments require the approval of the council. In other words, the legal level of budgetary control is the department level. And so what the audit is saying, I haven't found the authority on which it's relying, but what the audit is saying is that the budget is sort of considered at the department level. So, making changes within the, the budget, within that department, fine. Making changes from one department to another department is excluded there. What I would be recommending is that we look at the amount of money that was transferred from, as I understand it, the HR position to the, whatever it was that built the fire department. And I, I'd strongly recommend upfront that we get a resolution, amending the budget so that it's just crystal clear. It's never as fun to do it after the fact, but it's, it's, it's at least addressing the issue instead of playing ostrich. An issue related to that that I want to delve more in is whether we should be making those transfers within the department. I spoke with David Schoen after you, the attorney with the municipal league, after Mr. Mosley sent me that email. I had a good conversation with him about it, and he was kind of saying, along the same lines. We need to look at how we're doing the budgets and whether, if we don't want to allow that discretion, and we want a, you know, we want, if the electric bill is high that month or that year, we want budget resolutions ongoing throughout the year. If that's what we want to do, then that's something the council can do. And there's, so there's various ways of addressing that, but what we need to make sure that we're doing is doing it in accordance with our own law, our own ordinances and resolutions. The state law's really vague on what constitutes an appropriation. In other words, has the council appropriated money for, let's look at the, the printing, or is that different than giving money for office supplies or copying costs? And so, what I've actually been looking into for a couple of weeks now, off and on, as I get a chance, is that issue right there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your, your efforts here. You've, you've had, had to work very fast.
Well, so part of this, I would, in fact, I had a discussion.
This is an ongoing thing here. Yeah, we're just kinda getting information at the last minute.
I had a discussion with the mayor, I want to say several weeks ago, the city clerk may have been there as well, where I said, so we're doing transfers between line items in a budget. And he said, yeah. And I said, where, why do we do that, or how do we do that? And I, I hate quoting people because I'm so bad at it, but I think he said, well, I think I said, under what authority are we doing that? And I think he said, well, that's the way it has been since before I got here, and that's the way it has been under, you know, you're the second city attorney, and I've had multiple finance directors, and no one has told me that that's not the way it is. And so, I said, well, okay, let me start digging. And, and then, of course, the fire gets lit under my rear end when we get a letter that's making not only those accusations, but, but bigger ones as well.
Okay, okay. What, can, can you explain that transfer and how much it was, and what it was for, and was it the bond money? Was it?
Well, I, I sent a, I was keeping track of all the expenses. Basically, we had X amount of dollars, and, well, let me do this the right way. We had, oh shit. We had two million, four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars and four, three, two million, four hundred and forty-three, four forty-six point seven zero dollars to build the fire station. So, two four four three, four four six point seven zero. Part of that was in a two thousand thirteen bond issue. Part of that was in a two thousand fourteen bond issue. So, there was two separate accountings, two separate funds it was coming out of, but the total was that number. So, on March the third, I turned in a requisition to pay the last payment to the contractor. The payment was for fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. The bond, not underwriter, but the bond trustee sent me an email back, said you only have thirty thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents in your account. And I was like, what? How did that happen? So, what occurred then was, is I checked all my numbers and found out that we were paying a hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month in service fees for them to administer the fee. I wasn't aware of that, that that was occurring. I had not seen a statement, so I wasn't aware of that. So, that's a little over six thousand dollars that wiped into the account. I also had a number in there that was incorrect in my spreadsheet, and so it was giving me a false number that I had left in there, because I thought we had about sixty thousand dollars in the account, and the fifty-three thousand dollars would have been paid. But what was not covered was twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents. That was on March the sixth, I found that out. I'd made an offer to an HR director on roughly February the twenty-fourth, or something like that. Made another offer to a HR director on, I think it was the end of, end of March, first of April's timeframe. So, I mean, I was not trying to hold money back. I didn't even know about the, the era that I'd made until March the sixth. And, and basically, I'd asked them to pay a bill, and the contractor was waiting on payment, and I did a budget transfer to pay the contractor for services rendered.
Okay. But, I mean, you would normally come to us on a deal like that.
Well, yeah. I, I should have come to you. There, there's no doubt. I should have come to you on that. I went in and, and told Ms. Corte what I'd done. She prepared the document for me to sign and did not raise a concern. She prepared the document for me to sign and did not raise a concern to me at that time that we really should be taking this to the council. Now, you know, should she have done that? You'd have to ask her that. But, uh, was she setting me up? I don't know. But, you know, yes, I should have come to the council for that.
All right, so at this point, we don't know if it's legal or illegal or whatever, just, just an oversight or whatever.
So it's, it's my opinion that, that we need to transfer that money through resolution for the inner, for department to department. That's even outside of the scope of what our audit says we do.
Is it the right thing to transfer it within the general fund, or is, or is, was this from, were we paying these, these building costs out of another bond money account?
We don't pay them. Uh, the, the money actually comes from the-
Okay, so there is not enough money left, and go ahead.
Well, the, the bond, the money that's collected through the property taxes don't come to the city.
All right.
They go directly to the bank that's handling the bonds, the trustee. So we don't pay, we don't write those checks normally. I send a rec, a check requisition to the bond trustee, and they then issue the check for those funds, for that amount that it needs to be for. And so therefore, there was not enough money in that bond account. Well, but you cannot, I couldn't take money from another project that was there because those, those funds are earmarked for a project. So they cannot be taken from, can't use one from project A to spend on project B.
Okay.
So, so there was not money being spent out of the city account until I did a transfer.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me rephrase that one other thing, though. Back in, um, 2015, a, when we, when the bids came in, the council did appropriate an additional $175,000 to cover the land cost on the fire station at that time. So there were, there were five payments made by the city directly that did not come out of the bond fund, because the council appropriated $175,000. And so that went out, and that's where I think I got messed up on my numbers and, and in my spreadsheet.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's continue the discussion on what's, what's right and what's not right, since it's, it's a discretion of the city as to whether inter, interdepartment transfers can be made and that sort of thing. I, I would like to see that not be something that's done just as a matter of deal. You know, I don't mind having office supplies netting out copy expense or whatever. I don't mind that at all. We don't need to be involved in that.
Where do you draw the line? I mean, I, I ran government accounts for 15 years of my military career.
I'm saying by, by department.
Yeah, and you move them between departments if you need to, as long as you can justify where they're going. But to, to hamstring the, the administrative portion of this city with us having to do basically line item approvals, we might as well be here full-time.
I appreciate your thoughts on that. Like I said, I'm still digesting all this, but I'm trying to get the facts, and I think I've gotten a lot of facts tonight, and I appreciate it.
And just to be clear, regarding the transfers, it'd be my recommendation that regardless of which way we, the council decides to go, that we just make it crystal clear. Let's, let's eliminate doubt in the future, let's get an ordinance, or do something so that the, the next group who's here after us isn't, isn't saying, well, I don't know, that's just the way it's always been done.
I agree 100%. I think you're right on target.
Make it clean.
But I, I believe we have that ability now with the budget. Because finance director comes to us through the mayor and says, hey, we need to move $41,000 from this account, from the general fund, and earmark it for this, because it's above the budget. But if we have passed a budget, and the mayor can show the accounting footprint, if you will, of how to use those funds, I don't really see where we've got to track each and every item. Because then the question is, where do you draw the line? Because she needs a case of paper over in the, over in her office, and we've got that over in finance, do we transfer that? That's, that's my point.
You don't want to create bureaucracy.
I just think-
Well, so, so if, if that's-
We need to have general guidelines out there that if, uh, you know, especially in this where we had a capital project that was funded by bonds, my understanding is, like the mayor pointed out, we cannot earmark bond funds for this and spend it on this. But there's nothing saying we can't come up from the general fund and pay a shortfall. That's what it did. He should have come to us and asked for that shortfall.
Right.
But he made a clerical error, and he was without a finance director for a period of time. So that, that's my opinion.
I think, I'm sorry. So what you're saying is, from department to department, we need something that makes it very clear, but line items within the department, I mean, that happens, I mean, when I budget at home, I mean, that's, I have to, we have to do that. But I think to make it crystal clear, like you said, so that there's not a question from department to department, I think that there needs to be something in writing, just so it'll be clean.
And, and I just want to be clear that I, my research isn't completely exhausted at this point. I don't know if there is an ordinance, I checked the code, I didn't see it, but I've seen old ordinances that didn't end up in the code, or an old resolution, because the budgets are approved by resolutions. There may be a resolution that I'm unaware of. And so the, the research is still ongoing, but in the short term, I'd recommend a resolution, transferring the funds from the, the HR to the, uh, fire department, or wherever the appropriate place for that to go is, just so that that's taken care of.
Okay, sounds good. I guess I've already hit my thing here.
Oh, you're, you're, okay. I think you're still on, so.
I'm still on. I, I appreciate your thoughts about a, a special meeting. I, I don't know that I'm ready for that yet, but I do like the idea, I really do like the idea of, of us forming an audit committee to have some group of, our, our continued to meet with the auditors and just kind of maybe learn a little bit more about the audit process, and who should be doing the audit and that sort of thing. That is, in, in every entity, it's, it's usually an independent entity that picks, picks the auditors. Like in banking or a big company, it's the, you've got an audit committees, and it's usually made up of like, internal audit departments and board of directors and people like that. And so I think we need to think about having an audit committee, just kind of a little added layer of control, but it shouldn't be any big deal. So, anyway, that's something to be talked about again, too. Like I said, I, I'm still digesting, I was extremely busy last week. I'd only had a chance to read over Ms. Cordy's memo one time before today. And, uh, so I'm still digesting it, too, but I appreciate everybody's discussion. And, and I think we ought to continue our thing with, uh, city attorney here, as far as, I imagine we will, as we get a budget transfer ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley. Mr. Kelly, did you have?
Uh, no, sir, that covered it. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to remind the council that the last time that we did our discussion with our budget, we all came to consensus, consensus that we wanted to not be so micromanaging that we would audit every line item. And so that was the, you know, that was the atmosphere that we had, that we were going to tell each department head that we want them to reach a certain number, and, and then after they reached that number, then we asked them to take off a percentage, instead of going through and saying, well, why are you spending this for this, or why are you spending this for that? So that was the atmosphere, and that was the, that was, that was what our, I mean, that was my intention, was that we are, um, we are handling the budget as a whole, okay? And then we give it to the department heads, and the ultimate department head, which would be the mayor, to, to manage that within that budget, right? When we are asked by resolution to make any changes, it's usually to add to that budget, right? Is to move monies, because we've spent, or we're intending on spending more than the budget that we all agreed on. So, does there need to be a policy and procedure set, or is there one that we just aren't aware of, to moving monies within a department? I think that is a cleaner way to do it, but I don't know if it needs to be mandated by the council, because we're still, we're still within those constraints of our budgetary model, right? So, I, I do agree that we need to have a cleaner process and make sure that, that there is a paper trail, but I don't want to end up, with all good intentions, hamstringing the general business of the city. And what I mean by that is, if you have situations where you needed to pay something, and you do have the money in your budget, and even if you had both department heads involved and approve it, to move monies from one department to another so that you can pay outstanding bills, and that you can do that, I, I think that should be the, the, a tool in the toolbox. But it does need to be addressed to us and tell us, but I don't know, you know, so we need to, to think about that a little bit if we, because we only meet twice a month. So every time that we need to move money around, especially if it's, you know, in a, in a situation where we, we don't, we want to pay our bills, and we have the money, we don't want to hamstring our department heads on, on, on that ability. So just, we need to think that through. It, it's very hard to, to talk whenever I have so much commentary in the, in the audience, so please try to keep that down. Thank you. So that's what I want to do, is just to keep that discussion open so that we make sure that, um, that we're not creating bureaucracy that's gonna hinder the general operation of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
I respect your comments, but we, we, you know, it shouldn't be a daily thing, it shouldn't be a meeting thing, it should be a deal when we've, we've overspent, or we, you know, we need to-
Oh, and I totally agree with that. If we're gonna overspend, um-
Which is exactly what we've been talking about, really, was that we overspent on the fire station.
But not on the general budget. We didn't overspend on our general budget.
I don't know what you're saying, but, uh, it was, it was-
We didn't add to our budget that we passed. All you did was move it within departments.
Well, it was, it was, it was not within department, it was two hundred-
I mean, I'm sorry, from department head.
It was, it was kind of a big thing, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, I agree.
Anyway, I appreciate if you come for us on those in the future, okay?
I, I will do that. Did any discussion on that item? If not, we'll move on to mayor's comments. Our Memorial Day service, I don't know how many of y'all were there, I know several of y'all were, but we had a, one of our largest crowds ever, I think, that attended it there, and so it was very good. The weather was perfect, you couldn't ask for better weather. And I want to thank publicly, Blue Keller, for stepping in. Our, our speaker got sick on, I believe it was Friday night, wound up having to take a trip to the hospital, and was running fever and everything else, so I called on Ms. Keller to ask her husband, Mr. Blue Keller, to be our speaker, and he did a great job, stepped in and gave us all a history lesson on something that we need to know. So I want to thank him for his willingness to step in, in that role. It's not easy to just come up with a speaker, and it's not easy to just come up with a speech for that person, and so I appreciate, he spent his weekend preparing a speech, so I appreciate that. And then also, the, the people that all participated in that, from our city elected officials that were involved in it, to our fire department, and, and the students from the Academics Plus Charter School that did a great job with their parts in it also. So thank everybody for being a part of that, and thank you if you attended it. Next item is the Plasky County Special School District election. I hope everybody understands what PCSSD is. I get so used to writing it, it, that's what we put there, but there's an election on June the 13th, and it's to extend the millage. It is not to raise the millage, it's to extend the millage by 13 years. It's a, to allow Plasky County Special School Districts to build, no, not build, to renovate and expand Sylvan Hills High School, that they're busting at the seams at currently, and they have all their ninth graders at a different location that's 10 miles away from the current building that they should be attending. So that's what the money would be used for that's going to extend this millage. So I'll leave it up to you on how you vote, but it's just the basics and the facts of it. And I do want to mention one other thing, you should have gotten one of these in the mail, maybe two of them, maybe four of them. There was actually four that went to most residences, and it was a, there's, you should have gotten one card that's for the Central Arkansas Water with a water quality report from Malmel. You should have gotten another one with the water quality report for Central Arkansas Water. It's two different systems, and we actually have people out here on both systems now. And so you should have gotten one for each one, but there was a, I, when I talked to the public affairs director over at Central Arkansas Water, they, when they sent them their electronic file, there happened to be two tabs. One was the tab that they were supposed to print, and one was their test tab that they ran by to verify everything. And when they sent it to the printer and the mailing service, they printed both tabs, and so everybody got four, as I understand it. So, uh, so, but I've gotten several calls, why did they send out four of these? But they meant to send out two, but you, most people got four. And next item is planning commission report. And-
I attended.
You attended, all right, yeah.
And all I've got to say is our, our proposed ordinance that was passed on from the planning commission on the marijuana facilities, medical marijuana facilities, is what was discussed. Representative House and Lowry both spoke, and to be honest with you, the best thing you can do is read the summary report that came out of the commission. It's very accurate and very well done, without me going into four pages of rhetoric. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thanks, sir.
Any council member comments?
I'm just gonna ask you real quick, who's, who's been transferred over to, uh, CAW Water? Is it River, River Run? Did they end up getting it? Not River Run, Riverland?
Well, I'm, the, the only area I know for sure, yeah, is down around Riverland, and then the, the hotel and the bank, First Security and all in that area is on Central Arkansas Water. And then I believe it's the Riverland, Riverland, Crystal Mountain Lane area, and then Danube, I believe. It comes so far up Danube, but I don't know how far it comes up there.
Okay, so they've, they've whipped over, they're on the lake water now, then?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I think from, uh, just to get back to the PCSSD election, from what I understand, it is to benefit Sherwood and Sylvan Hills High Schools, but if they, if they extend this millage, and they provide for more students in Sherwood, then it will also benefit Malmel, because for every additional student, or every student in PCSSD, the federal government gives us $6,600 per student. So if, if Sherwood expands, and Sylvan Hills expands, then, and gets more students, then consequently, it benefits us as well. I wanted to put that out there so that, you know, maybe at some point, we will be able to get our track that I think we need.
It's state money, not federal money, that they get. The $6,600 is state.
It's state money, I'm sorry.
It's state money, yes, yes.
Pardon me?
Yeah. But that is correct. Every student, if they can reduce their cost with teachers and that sort of thing, based on the number of students, then they save money, so it benefits the whole district. Any other council member comments? Mr. City Attorney?
No, sir.
Madam City Clerk?
No.
This time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motion second that the council adjourned. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.